Welcome. We're live with the Marion County Chamber of Commerce here at 304 Collective in Fairmont, West Virginia. Tonight is the eighth and final in our series of city council candidate forums. We're here tonight with Mr. Terry Burton, a candidate for District Four. Before we get started, we would love to hear from you. Please leave a comment and say hello. Also, if you have any questions for the candidate, please leave those in the comments as well and ask some questions from the community at the end of our session. We also want to remind everyone that when voting for city council, every resident in the city will vote for one person from each district. Be sure to tune in to meet each candidate. So let's go ahead and get started. So Terry, could you give us a brief bio of yourself?
I'll try. First of all, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce and also to this company for putting together this opportunity to speak to people during this awful COVID virus going around the country. And so I hope many people watch this to find out what's going on, but it's down to you folks and we can't thank you enough. As you can probably tell by my accent, I'm not from around this neck of the woods originally, even though I am an American. But I was born in London, England during the last years of World War II. And that was amid the bombings of the V-2 rockets and the doodlebugs coming in up to 1945. So my childhood playground was amid some of the ruins and destructions because that lasted all the way through the 40s and 50s. The ruins of bombed out houses and everything was our playground. That's all we had. Before I go any further, I think I would be very amiss if I didn't turn around to the people of America and say, "Thank you so much for what you did for us in 1945. You saved England, you saved Europe, and the tragedy of it all was you lost so many people to whom we are so thankful." And I think it'd be amiss for me not to just say that thank you to the people of America. We don't forget you. And of course, I was very involved in D-Day in Normandy, 1944, 6th of June. I've been following that for years and I'll tell you about it in a little bit here. But after everybody got bombed out, they built these massive estates of asbestos prefabs, prefabricated buildings built of asbestos and painted with lead-based paint inside. There was estates of them everywhere. We didn't get bombed out, but the council did move us to it when we needed to move home. So I lived in one of those things, asbestos houses with lead-based paint for many, many years. But despite all that, we survived. And of course, it's a little bit different now when you talk about asbestos and lead-based paint. I came to Fairmont in the 1990s and I lived in what was known as a house of some historical significant. I'm really into history. Unfortunately, the home was sold before I could finish restoring it. And I had to return to England to care for my mom. My mom was very poorly, having strokes and things. And she did obviously pass away eventually. Now, my wife comes from Reevesville of all places and that's my connection here. She is one of the Poling family. And my father-in-law used to be a deputy sheriff here and a bailiff at the courthouse, Gary Poling. But my wife became an exchange student between WVU and the University of Hertfordshire when she came over. And I've just kicked my sign down, haven't I? That teaches me to sit still, won't it? This is a live show, folks. We don't care. There we are. We'll have another go. But while in the UK, over the years, I became very involved and became the chairman and trustee of veterans groups, supporting veterans' needs and raising thousands of dollars to help Normandy veterans every year travel to Normandy to take part in the annual 6th of June 1944 pilgrimages. And I used to go around schools teaching kids that with a mobile exhibition. They needed to learn. We used to visit the war cemeteries and things. So I'd use to take up to 20 kids, I used to tend the 11 with their teachers to Normandy on the ferries and on the buses and to educate them about it. So that was what I was doing in England. Then my wife and I, America was still our home even though we were in England because of these circumstances. And she reminded me racked up many air miles traveling backwards and forth between Pittsburgh to come here and London before eventually we returned to the States permanently. Now, we have two daughters. One is a freshman at WVU and the other is a sophomore at Fairmont Senior High School. So that's a bit about my background and what I've been doing. There's more yet.
Well, very interesting because I'm from Reevesville. That's my hometown, yes. So can you tell us a little bit about your district?
Yeah, District Four is interesting. It's a large sprawling area incorporating one of the major thoroughfares. People kind of forget it because you've got the gateway that was built since I was here last. Major thoroughfare through the city. It begins at the northernmost part of the city limits. District Four could be considered the northern gateway to Fairmont because for those coming in from Reevesville and Grant Town, as well as those traveling Route 19 from Morgantown. Now, I've been going around this district for quite some time and I've seen some really attractive, well-maintained homes with absolutely gorgeous yards and garden areas. People really take pride in their home and how their yards look. You know, it's the street scene and it looks absolutely beautiful. But I've been shocked at times at some homes tucked away in little back streets as if they're forgotten, dead ends. They're rundown, they're dilapidated, and some with families and children living in them. I saw kids the other day sitting playing in the dirt outside of this ramshackle shed to me. And to me, this is shocking and sad. I come from Old Europe. Old Europe, as everybody knows, is over 1,000 years old. And yet we still have buildings and homes still standing from centuries ago. And I always say, goodness me, this is the greatest country in the world. America's only 244 years old. But this shows me how some families need help and support. This should never be in America. I know from all my dealings in Fairmont with the people, and I love following the Fairmont Community page for input. I soak it up. There's great love and support in people in Fairmont. They care. And so there's so much that could be done to support and help people who are vulnerable if it was appropriately organized. These people don't need to live like this in America. I know people come from overseas, Mexico, wherever, they think the streets are paved with gold. And you know, we shouldn't be having this with some of these people. So much can be done.
And you probably talked to this question just a bit, but why did you decide to run for city council?
Soon after I returned to England to take care of my only mother, the national election came up in the United Kingdom in 2002. And this is kind of thing that my wife is at university and I, what am I going to do? Why she's there. Now, a friend of mine, Sir Sidney Chapman, I say sir because he was one of these gentlemen that was knighted with a sword on each shoulder by the Queen. He was a knight, I say sir. He was a very big member of Parliament and he encouraged me to run in the election because he knew all the things I've been doing with the veterans and schoolchildren. And he said, "You would be very good if you ran in the election." So I threw my hat in the ring and lo and behold, I won the election. Then I was elected on a second year term. And that time I was amazed because I had 11,500 people majority on top of what I had before vote for me. So I must have been doing something right. So I was elected to a second term, serving eight years in all before returning to West Virginia. I said to my wife, I said, "I've got to go home. I can't handle this anymore." So we came home. I wanted to tell you, I really loved serving the people. I thought it was fascinating looking after their interests and so forth. I was appointed onto many different committees with the government, planning, the environment, the ROTC because of my connections with veterans, groups licensing, that's liquor licensing, the police consultative group and overview and screw committees. I was on about 15 different committees, opened up a door. My area had more than 380,000 residents. That's who I was responsible to. And you can imagine that if I didn't get things right, I would have been taken to the Tower of London and drawn and quartered or something, you see, as I always say. But you compare that to what, 18,000 a bit in Fairmont. This should be comparatively easy, but nothing's ever easy. But I do have that background experience. What was interesting, I had the largest Jewish community in the entire Great Britain there. And there was a significant proportion of Greek Cypriots. I had the largest Chinese community in London. These lovely people from all over the world. I found it thoroughly entertaining. The crowning glory of my time as a councilman was being appointed to the Meralty. That's why I started to wear gold chains and robes and things, you see, as they do there. And a whole new world of experiences opened up to me. I was invited all the time to Indian, Jewish, the synagogues, the Muslim community events, the Chinese church, Sri Lanka festivals and more. And I was even chosen to lead a peace delegation to Cyprus on behalf of the United Kingdom government. And you've got to remember that Cyprus is still like Korea. It's a divided country. You've still got the barbed wire and the minefields between it with the Muslim Turkish North and you've got the Greek Cypriot South. And that was 75 years ago and that's still divided like Korea. So I went there. So putting all this together, I've been looking for the opportunity to return to public service. I've missed it. So running for city council seemed the right choice. So this is it. Now I'm at the hands and the mercy of the people. It's down to them.
So you had a very diverse area.
Yeah, I loved it. I really loved it. I found it challenging all the time, you know. It's really good.
So currently, what do you see the challenges for Fairmont? And how do you hope to deal with these challenges if elected to office?
Fairmont's got a lot of challenges. Everywhere has lots of challenges. Things need, not necessarily new challenges, but there are things that need to be completed because they're not done. There's always challenges to improve Fairmont as with any city. Now, I know some of these city codes are ridiculous because I've experienced them and seen them. And one wonders who on earth made them up and why. I always look back and say, "Why was that done? Who did it? And the reason why?" I won't get into them because everybody who's watching knows different things about city codes. The city authority in this respect needs to be seen working with its residents, not restricting them with petty rules and regulations. You can't do that. You alienate people. You need to work with people. So simple things that would ultimately enhance the properties and improve the street scene if they were allowed to do it. At the moment, the council and the rules stop them doing it. I would also wonder why, and I was amazed to see it because when I was here in the 90s, they didn't exist that I remember. But who put up parking meters in downtown Fairmont? I can't understand. I suspect this may deter some folks from visiting downtown. And what little business you do have down there with shopping centers everywhere, have all the shops and free parking. And you're restricted with the number of businesses that people will come to and you're worried about parking meters. I mean, if this was, you compare this to New York, DC, Philadelphia, and such where I've been, you can understand the need of parking meters. I wondered if it was a cash-raising exercise to catch a quarter at a time to fund the council or something. But surely one to two of our free parking zones, the signs, free parking to our stop, turns it, still turns it over, but you're not taking money from people all the time. Would open it up. There is small business growth in the downtown area. So there's still very little to attract visitors to the downtown area. I know it's, you know, we're fighting it all the time. And I've often thought of a ladies' fashion shop of clothes, a gentleman's clothes. I know you've got the hairdressers. A flower shop is down the end, shut for a while. It'd be nice to open that up. And I know in some towns they have the Lation and food stores and things like that. There's all manner of little outlets. But the biggest thing of all, and I've always found this in business, don't put rents that people cannot pay from the income and sales. You always get these greedy landlords who put people out of business by overcharging on the rents. And they say, "If anybody's ever thinking about it, don't do it. Work with people on the rents." Now, another wonderful challenge in this Fairmont is with the Department of Transport and the state of the pothole roads. The occasional patching makes them like roller coasters. And they're sometimes just as bad to drive on as when they've got the holes. And it's only a short time now before the snowplows come out and start tearing them all up again. So this is another thing council must stay on top of, keeping the roads smooth, clear, and Badger, the Department of Transport. Trash, oh, it's always a problem. You're laughing at me. You know where I'm coming from. Especially along Pennsylvania Avenue where I live. The street is littered with cigarette butts. They don't put ashtrays in cars anymore. People just lob their cigarette butts out the car windows. I was going to come here tonight with a big bag of them to show you and put live on TV and I didn't get around to doing it. But I also see cans, bottles, and fast food wrappers tossed out onto people's front yards. There's a little senior lady lives a few doors down from me and every week she's out with a broom, sweeping the lawn, sweeping the sidewalk and the curb edge because she takes pride in her home. But I'm, I always joke with her, I say, "When you finish, can you come up and do mine?" And she laughs at me. But she shouldn't be out there doing it. She shouldn't need to do it, but she cares, you know? I like the slogan. You ought to get some street signs with a slogan on there. "Please don't litter, make Fairmont glitter." Do you like that?
I like that. I do.
There's something, bring it home to people with street signs. "Please don't litter, make Fairmont glitter." You know, it's sad when I've looked under the, excuse me, when I've looked under the bridges at times, the homeless, you have wonderful agencies in this town working for them. It's ongoing. It doesn't stop. But the time is now for more action to help these people. I know there's accommodation being looked at. I know they are talking about a heating shelter for them to huddle into, to keep warm in the winter. But that's stepping stones. We're not in a final solution. And you know, I've met war veterans and that hits home with me with my background with the Normandy Veterans Group and the other people, war veterans, people from, people who fought in Korea and Vietnam is a big one. And whatever reasons, either they, you know, they've gotten to drugs because their minds are gone, PTSD and so forth. They need help and we can't turn our backs on it. And as I said, the drug problem and the dumping of used needles and drug paraphernalia is a constant battle to address. Now, I do know there's wonderful agencies and people in this town diligent working in this town to help both the homeless and the drug problem. But there's so much more needs to be done. And we as councilmen and the organizations need to support them, get involved, get on their committees, find out ground roots, what's going on with these people so you know what's going on and you can help them. Now, I'm informed there are about 156 abandoned, derelict, and uninhabitable properties around Fairmont which are a complete eyesore. This really must deter prospective citizens looking at moving to Fairmont and wondering when they see them, what on earth is going on. Now, I wanted to tell you, I had a house here of historic value built in 1890 and I was restoring it. And I delved into the history of it because I like history. And it sits right across from the newspaper office on the corner of Ogden Avenue, a big stone house, 18 rooms, one bathroom, which I could never fathom out till later, and a turret. When I had to go back to England urgently, I had to sell it because mom was dying. And I sold it to a gentleman who was in Texas. Then he was in Iowa, wherever, he was moving around. That's 27 years ago or more. And I've understand from neighbors, he's visited it three or four times. It's been totally vandalized. Homeless have trashed it, vandals getting it. You've got the big ornate mantles with plate glass mirrors smashed. And the trash is up to your knees. You'd have to have a hazmat team in to clean it out. The roof is leaking like a sieve and the water runs down the second, third floors, rotting out the floors. This is typical of America's history, things that need to be preserved. You think you could take that house, it could be restored from 1890 and it could be a community asset? It could be a little community center for the people? The opportunities are endless of what you could have done with a historic home to preserve it. You've got the similar one with the Marion County Historical Society Museum. Preserve your history. 244 years old, you're losing it. And what makes it worse with this house? Well, I just found something on the internet today. When I was there, I found, I delved into the history of it and found out it was an office, not a home, which is why there was one bathroom. And it was a cold baron and the Ogden family. And it was their offices. The Ogden family were pharmacists. Down in the basement with all these little cupboards, I thought it was the butler's pantry being from where I'm from, but it turned out to be the pharmacy. And when I was restoring the house, I kept finding all these little medicine bottles, you know, little bottles of
That's why, they were pharmacists.
Lodna, 18th century lodna, opium. But I gave the bottles to the museum at West Virginia University. They have a bottle exhibition there. That's where they went. And my wife Googled it earlier. I found a folder in the attic and there were letters, personal letters from mother to son in 1898 to 1910. He was at university college studying. Dear mother, very polite, wonderful letters. They went to the museum up there and they're all preserved and they actually have them listed with my name on their WVU website for people researching. So that's what it was. And then the cold baron gave up, sold it to the Ogden family. And of course, Ogden Avenue is named after the house. It's Ogden House. That's the link. And then when you go into the cemetery just over here, the historic cemetery, you just, as you just go in the gate, there's a massive big plot with about 15 graves and that's the Ogden family. This is all history. This is Fairmont's history.
Fairmont has lots of
And I was part of it and I felt very proud I did. But this man won't sell the house. It's condemned now by the city because it's such a state. And I'm still pursuing it, trying to get a hold of it, to do something with it. I spoke to him in Charleston, all sorts of things. I find it sad. So, but with all this going on with abandoned properties, I appreciate, and I've been reading stories, I know how hard it is to track down owners and next of kin, to do something about these wrecks left blight in our streets. But I know that where there's a will, there's a way. And I hate procrastination in accomplishing any endeavor. I'm a little bit like a bull to go after things. I want a result. So I think we need to be very aggressive and very short-fused in going after owners and demolishing these eyesores. It'd be much better to knock them down, lay grass and have a grassy area. But you know, the city's littered with them. You can't do it. And some of them are very old and historic homes.
There are a lot of historical homes and buildings in Fairmont. So when you're talking about all of these challenges that Fairmont has, what kind of new initiative or things that are not currently happening, and I think you named a few of those, that aren't happening in Fairmont that you hope to bring to the table as a
Not necessarily new initiatives, but continuing some of the things going on that have happened that need to be finalized. We have many roads and bridges throughout Fairmont or in our special heroes in life, Spanky was one of them. One new initiative is when you reflect back in time to the great, and I love that man, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and what he did for this country and all his work with the civil rights movement. We, and because he changed, he didn't just change America, he changed the world. It opened the door that spread throughout the world. One such, so diligently worked to help and support all those in need was what he did. And one such unsung hero you have in this town was the late Amy Rose Parks, that dear lady who all her life serviced to this town and its inhabitants. Sadly, they were unable to honor her with a memorial event at Windmill Park. But I'm swinging, I spoke to a daughter about this and she just looked at me with tears in her eyes and smiled, what a lovely gesture. I believe in renaming, I don't know where Windmill Park got its name from because I don't see any windmills. But what's the problem in perhaps renaming Windmill Park in her honor and perhaps to something along the lines of the Amy Rose Parks Recreational Center would be a wonderful memorial gesture to her? That's what you're calling honoring your local heroes?
Yes, that's nice.
So easy. Now, it's not necessarily a new initiative on another subject, but the recycling in this town is pathetic. Recycling, I mean, I was dealing with London. There's four and a half million people throwing their trash out. You imagine that on the recycling and the refuse dumps. But you've got, you're growing. The recycling program really needs to be promoted better to the citizens. And I've seen reports on the community page and I've also spoken to people requesting recycling bins on several occasions, but they never get them delivered. So they get frustrated and they say, "Well, if they're not bothered, why should I?" But if you take a look out in the streets of Fairmont on recycling days, see how many recycling bins and bags have been put out. It's sporadic. There's not many. And if one ever bothers to get access to go and visit the landfill sites, you will find them absolutely littered with plastic bottles, cans, paper, and all the things that can be easily recycled to help the environment. And with the growth of Fairmont, you've got to do this for your future generations.
And that's a good point. Recycling's important. Can you talk about your thoughts on the Fairmont Human Rights Commission? And how do you see that group interacting with the city?
Well, I'm delighted there is a Human Rights Commission in Fairmont. I've Googled a few of them in the past. I mean, have you ever read the human rights people in Pakistan and India and what they do? It's worldwide. It's fascinating. And you get a, it's like me when I was in East London, we would compare notes with other councils throughout the country, what they were doing, what worked, what didn't work. And they're doing the same thing, human rights, what's their problems? How did they resolve it? Can we do that here? You learn from each other, experiences. And I'm committed to monitoring and protecting the human rights of the population, you know? I used to be, when I was in Washington DC years ago, I was an assistant director at the National Geographic Society headquarters on 17th Street. I had 35 African-American ladies working in my department and they told me horrific stories of what their life was like in the 60s, even at National Geographic. I could tell you, I won't tell you the stories now, but you know, that was my learning curve. Out that comes respect for everybody. I don't care, you know, the color of the skin, what your religion is or anything else. People are human beings and deserve to be respected and loved and cared for and helped. I think it's fascinating and I'm learning from them and I hope they learn from me, you know? We may refer the city of Fairmont as a single entity, but we must realize that it is in fact a community and it's made up of diverse group of citizens and all of them deserve fair and just treatment and representation. I wholeheartedly support the promotion of a human dignity and mutual respect for our citizens, whoever they may be. And I would look forward to working with them closely. Now, I've worked on similar committees in government in England, in London. And one interesting thing is they were made up of community leaders from all walks of I was on the police consultative group and all the time you're looking at crime and things in the area and you want leaders from different entities in the city for their creative input. So the police chief sat there, but you had all the church leaders, council members, and different organizations, community centers, their people came. We all want to know what's going on. Everybody had an input and we resolved a lot of things. So saying that, all walks of life and community, it would be nice to see representatives on it, on the Human Rights Commission, from church leaders. from church leaders. I know there's one there now. There should be more church leaders. You should have the police chief in there because he's the one ringleader, knowing what's going on in the town with all his reports coming in from his offices. I don't know why he doesn't sit on it to give his input and see what's going on. So, you know, and council members should be on it. Everybody providing their time to be part of the committee, all of whom, they give widespread input on the needs of the community. And, you know, and it's not happening yet, is it?
It's fairly new, but...
It's very new. We've got to grow, and we've got to grow fast.
That's right, and that's one of the positives. It can go anywhere. So everything has been fascinating, listening to you, Teri. Is there anything that we didn't cover today that you would like to share?
Yeah, how long you got? You want to sit here till... If everybody watching are going to be here till midnight? I have a warped sense of humor, I must admit, you know? But I'm just normal, you know, I think. I think one important thing mentioned is if the people decide to elect me, and I hope they do, someone said to me, "Oh, gosh, you're going to be like a breath of fresh air." I said, "Well, I don't know about that." I think, if I may, officers, many politicians, whether councilmen or others, they have jobs, they have businesses, and we know some of them are very rich. I'm not. I live on a pension. But all of it can be time-consuming when you want to be a politician or you want to be a councilman at the same time. And sometimes, I'm sure it's difficult, I know this for a fact because I used to work when I was a politician, to find time to serve people that you've been elected to represent. Now, I think it's worth remembering, people, I'm retired. I've got no business or daily commitments to attend if elected. I do cook dinner every day for the wife and kids.
Wow.
Is that good?
That's very good.
My wife is in a law office in Morgantown.
You willing to expand that to a few more families?
Yeah, I used to do catering, so I'm dab hand at cooking.
That's pretty nice.
But I want to say the community is going to have 100% of my time seven days a week because I'm not doing anything else. I'm there for them. And I know, and, you know, people used to come to me when I was a deputy mayor, and I used to do these things on the planning department. People would come in and dress us and say, "We've got a problem down in our street", and they would explain what it is. Now, every time I've gone to meetings and council meetings and public places, they go, "Okay, we'll make a note of it. We are aware of the situation", is a phrase that doesn't mean anything to me. And the other phrase is, "We'll look into it." And then you don't hear anymore. I don't work like that. I turn around to them and say, "Fine. What are you doing tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock?" Nothing. I'll be at home. Want to meet me? I'm going to come down and see it for myself. I go out and see, meet the people. I want to see what their problem is to get it resolved. I don't put it on the back shelf, "Yeah, I'm aware of it. We'll deal with it." That doesn't wash with me, you know? So I've always maintained, as a councilman, three things, and they're very important to me. And I stand by them: honesty, transparency, and listen to the people. And that's my philosophy.
So we do have one question from our viewers. Do you think city council members should be held accountable for their social media posts?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I already mentioned it there, didn't I?
You did. You did.
You know, you cannot do that. You know, I've said, "I don't care what race you are, what religion you are. You're a human being. You deserve to be respected." Politics at the moment, on TV, between the big boys, shall I say, they're all name-calling and throwing things at each other. I've never done that. I don't believe in it. I'm not going to win an election by being rude about people and name-calling. Everyone's a human being. It's the people's decision at the end of the day. Just listen to it. This is what I've done. This is what I do, and this is what I would like to do. And they did the same thing. I don't have to point fingers or say anything about anybody, you know? I thought you was going to ask me the other question that's been floating about here all the time.
So what question is that?
If you've got a million dollars, what would you do for the Fairmont? I was waiting for that one because I thought it was fascinating.
Well, tell us what you would do with a million dollars.
You think of all the agencies and the goodwill and the people doing things in the town. And I gather them all around. We've got a million dollars.
Yes.
I want you to make application to us, our committee, who are going to deal with this. Tell us how much you need and how at that pot, and what you need it for to resolve your situation.
So I have another question.
Spread it to the people.
So are you going to take that million dollars and try to create something that it continues? So you just don't spend a thousand or a million dollars and it's gone? Are you going to create something that it continues and you can better the communities and...
Yes, I used to be very good at raising money.
Good. So it would...
I did it for you.
When you start an initiative, we want something that continues because there's nothing worse than having something wonderful start, and then the money dries up, and that happens so many times. I'm in higher ed. We have grants, and it happens. So that would be wonderful, to see something continue.
Yeah, I've got very good. I used to rough notes. My wife used to draft it up. And we used to raise thousands and thousands of dollars for the Normandy Veterans and schoolchildren to go to Normandy. The 60th anniversary of D-Day, the 65th anniversary of D-Day, the 70th anniversary of D-Day. And I raised thousands. I bought a 17-seat minibus.
Wow.
That was given to me to take the kids, paid for the ships, the hotels. We used to raise thousands, and that was for that cause. But it can be done with all sorts of things. I did it for their community centers. I did it for their furnishings and their food, where they could, the old boys could come down and have lunch and, you know, we used to, I used to do that. And that was my, that was my little thing, was the veterans. But you can do it with anybody.
Oh, absolutely. And I'm glad you asked that question.
It was all from grants and foundations. I went digging out, find out who was doing grants and foundations, and I went after them.
Right.
You know, and I used to have to write up massive, great portfolios, you know, how the money would be spent wisely and who it's for and what would be the needs and what would be the satisfaction.
Right.
You know, it worked. Yeah, but you've got to get into it.
It's been fascinating, listening to you and all your ideas for Fairmont. So on behalf of the 304 Collect in the Marion County Chamber, I want to thank you. And I want to remind everyone to go vote. It's very important. Thank you again for tuning in.
May I say, if we're still live, is this where I say in a good English term to the viewers in a true English style, where I can say cheerio, toodles, and ta-ta for now?
Wonderful. Thank you.
See you later.